I want some pizza Jimmy. Oh, here we go. Run Frank, run!
I'm gonna do that same trick again. I'm gonna ask Selena to text me the link.
Okay, I'm already live. No, you're good, you're good, don't worry. Go ahead love. Mr. Page.
The time is 1:44 and we are out of executive session and back into our public meeting. And my understanding is now that the administration would like to do a presentation on some COVID-19 health and safety planning information.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, members of the board. This presentation is essentially in three parts. The first is to give some background and context about how we planned for this school year from last May through August. Then it's talking about some information that we need to, we had to consider in August, what circumstances changed. And then finally, we'll end with Dr. Sherer talking about the various considerations based on that context. And so, the first is a review of the parameters within which we had to plan the beginning of this school year, which our first day of school was Monday. It was only five days ago. And as we were working through, all through the summer until August, we knew that last year, the state fully funded remote learning, so that last year we offered two different platforms. You could be in school, face-to-face, or you could be in Heights at home. This year, the legislative session ended in May with no funding allocated for remote learning. So in effect, we were not, we did not have the capacity to offer a remote platform like we did last year. So we knew that going into the summer. Last year, the state allowed us to count a child present for school even if they were not physically in school because of quarantine or isolation. At least in early August, that was not the case. We have a bit of something that came out in, at the end of the first week of August, that was uncovered in a second. Last year, the state did not require any district to even report attendance. Because of the pandemic, they funded us based on our enrollment over the past three years. It was called the Health of Everybody Harmless Based on Attendance. We kept our own attendance, we can track rates, but they funded us fully as a flexibility given to us to just get through the pandemic. The state is not offering us that same flexibility this year. They're only providing us funding for students who are in our schools face-to-face. That's something that we knew going into the summer as we were planning. Now, the next thing is that last year, TEA, which the governor gave the power to promulgate COVID guidelines for us last year, required us to keep students who are in close contact with an active case to quarantine away from campus for a period of time. This year, the state is not requiring that. They only give us the power to recommend that. Now, of course, the reason why I have August 11th on all of these is because that's where Maricay came out to create a kind of a legal model. But what I'm trying to share with everyone is the parameters within which we were planning our own of school all the way up to that point. Now, we also knew that vaccinations were a layer of mitigation that we didn't have last year. Until the very end of the year, even then for, it was for priority folks. And so, going into the late summer, late July, CDC was giving their guidance saying if you were fully vaccinated, their recommendation was you didn't even need to wear a mask in public settings. That changed obviously, but what I'm trying to paint the picture of what we had all summer to work with as we were planning. We ended the year last year with a vaccination rate of about 80%, 90%. We began this year getting voluntary information and we looked like we were hovering at about 90% going back in. So, we were very positive that that layer of mitigation of these for our employees was going to be an added factor that we did not have last year. We knew that even students who were older than 12 or 12 and up had opportunities. And we saw lots of opportunities in the state of Texas and in Maricay County. We even saw folks where vaccinations were sitting on the shelf. And so, we even wrote short, in fact, in Alamo Heights, we offered with partnership with the National Guard, we had vaccination sites here at the high school cafeteria in May, June and July. And so that was a later that we didn't have last year. Now, given that, going into August, prior to August, we presumed that most of the Alamo Heights junior school kids and high school kids and employees were effectively insulated from the need of the extensive safety measures that we did last year. However, in late July, early August, when we saw data from the Delta variant jumping, that led us to rethink that assumption. But I don't want to walk past the fact that all throughout the summer, it looked different. Even so, we were still planning to maintain our regular processes when we identified a lab confirmed case to do contact tracing. Which by the way, the state of Texas does not require school districts to contact trace. That's something we thought it just made sense to communicate quarantine information at all grade levels. Now, we also knew as a parameter going into the summer, in May, the governor told us that we could not require masking or vaccinations of the elementary school and the junior school. Because we weren't going to be able to require masks and and they didn't have access to vaccinations. The other thing that we learned last year, and we also see it in the studies, is that it was a, this is primarily, it's, COVID is transferred through airborne means and that distance and intensity of exposure is the key to getting infected by it. Now, we knew that early on, that distance and intensity was the issue. But what we didn't know quite is that how, just ineffective or low leverage wiping down tables and that kind of thing was. We didn't know that for the first semester. People were just kind of gambling. And once we learned it really, it's not a high leverage investment, it's wiping stuff down. But, I'm gonna pause for a second just to remind everybody, because I've been living this for 18 months, but I'm not sure we're all on the same page. So, close contact, right? Now, the research shows that if you're around somebody who's infected with the virus, that how close you are to them and for how long makes the difference of the odds of you getting infected. And so, these are all kind of risk mitigation. There's no way to get rid of COVID, but there's risk mitigation. And so, what the CDC has defined, you've come into close contact exposure if you've been an aggregate of 15 minutes around somebody who's an active case and if you, within six feet. Now, in working with Metro Health, which we did all last year as close contact tracing, they do count various mitigating factors prior to saying somebody is close contact. Wearing a mask with fidelity, being a big mask maker, did make a difference to them. And so, that's why it's so important that we learned that, that close contact. I think I've covered that and I can cover it later if you guys feel like I need to. Now, that was all going into August, right? The end of July. As we recall, June was great, the numbers were low, the positivity rate in Maricay County was below 2%. Can you imagine that? Those were great days. Things started steadily climbing towards the end of July. And so, we saw that the Delta variant accounted for a large majority of the active cases in, both in the nation and the state, but all in Maricay County where we are. And then we also know from the research, not Dr., but the medical folks have shared with us, is that for every one Delta variant that's active case, they end up infecting about eight people. The variant we were dealing with last year would end up infecting about two. I don't know if that's quite eight times as much, but it's like an octopus just to reach out and hit eight people, right? Because they have eight arms. And so, we learned that over time, that's what we were seeing. At the time, folks were calling this a surge of the unvaccinated. Because at that time, it was mostly folks that were not vaccinated that were getting the Delta variant. Now, we do have breakthrough cases. But the positivity rate was starting to climb into 15%, 20%. It's dipped down a bit now, but it's still a lot higher than 2% where it was in June. Now, what we do know is that folks that are fully vaccinated do not have the same rates of being hospitalized or severe symptoms, even if they do get a breakthrough case. Now, with the high positivity rate, even going into July, given the parameters I explained earlier, right? We thought there was going to be no mask mandate and we knew vaccinations for under 12. We were planning, we anticipated there'd be more cases. We just anticipated having to deal with cases at those levels. And so, we felt like we had to add in a few more layers that we thought we needed to in June. And so, for the elementary and sixth grade, we had to be more mindful of keeping track of where, who kids were sitting next to, pods, thinking of rethinking plexiglass in the lunchrooms. We moved meet the teacher nights at the elementary to outside and limiting visitors. So, that's just kind of, we knew that coming in to this situation, given the parameters we were in. So, given those parameters, as we went to our advisory group and met August the 3rd, we were drafting our final guidelines to start the school year, which were posted here on August the 9th. If you recall, we had a communication plan to start the year. There's a three-week communication plan. We started talking about academics, then we talked about extracurricular stuff. And then, on August the 9th, Dr. Sherer's video message and the messages from all the campuses were about your safety guidelines. And so, we published them on the website. They're still there. You can see them there. You click on the, so they're one of those links. And also on the left, we've committed to continuing to publish the data that we submit to Dishes every month. There's community labs, COVID testing information, as well as whatever communications we've sent out to the district, we post on that link as well. And then, this is a different way of getting to that. On the homepage, what anybody goes to, under shortcuts, COVID resources there, and that takes you there. We will start publishing our COVID numbers on Monday. Because that's technically, this is our first week of school. You always, you go Monday to Sunday and then we post them on the Monday around 5 o'clock-ish. That's exactly how we did it last year. We're maintaining our process from last year. And in fact, on our website, we have all the same links to the county stuff and we added information about vaccinations as well. That's something that didn't exist last year, but all of our COVID data is the same way we did it last year. Now, so we planned, we were ready, and then we had a couple of things happen. One was the, this, the increase of the Delta variant and the numbers going up. And the second thing was the Maricay County Health Directive and then the legal back and forth, the whiplash that we've been dealing with. And so, as we think through, oh no, sorry, I'm not there yet. This is a summary of the main points that are in our health and safety guidelines. They're in there. And I just wanted to point out that, things we learned from last year is that we know that vaccinations are the primary layer of mitigation. Goes without saying, without a say. The second layer of mitigation, we knew, even when the governor told us we couldn't require masks, we knew that that's a strong layer of mitigation, just a fact. So it was hand washing, so it was symptom screening. So if you have symptoms, don't go out of the house, go get tested, that kind of thing. Those are the layers that we learned worked. And so, nothing changes. Those are layers that worked. Now, we also knew that we needed to be humble enough to know that situations change. And so, we wanted to be clear to the public that the health guidance that we posted on the website on the 9th to begin school on the 16th is something that we thought would at least be stable for nine weeks, maybe not good at least. We knew we'd have to adjust it accordingly based on numbers on the ground. At that time, we knew that we could not require masks, but we also needed CDC-recommended masks in schools indoors. And number four, we started to make this distinction ourselves, to use internally, I'm not sure it helped the public that much, but this notion of if somebody is an active case and has COVID, they, the law help gives us back and it says you cannot come to school. We're using the term isolation, just to use a different term. The term quarantine we're using is if you're in close contact and it's recommended if you stay home, we're using that term for quarantine for close contacts only. As I mentioned earlier, the important distinction is last year, TEA required close contacts to stay home. This year, TEA did not require a close contact. So, prior to August the 11th, this is what it looked like, quarantine were recommended. So this is what was on our, one of our big points. And the fifth point that I wanted to point out is that we're not required to do contact tracing, but we have committed to doing contact tracing just because we know that that's a good practice to help keep us in schools. This is also in our page. I know ventilation is on a lot of folks' minds. And so, this is just a list of the variety of things that we actually initiated last year. Everything on this list, we did last year with the exception of the HEPA purifiers, which are new this year, that we have purchased to put in the cafeterias, just because that's the place where people have to take their masks off to eat. And so, that's what we're doing. Yeah? Any of those arrived yet? Alright, so that is the summary of our plans and what we planned to open, what we published on August the 9th, anticipating first day of school, August the 16th, which was on Monday this week. Next, I'm gonna outline the context and perspective of things that we want to revisit, given the current state of numbers in the area. And that we're seeing this week. So here's what we know. We ground ourselves wanting to have students in the classroom as much as we can so they can learn with as minimal disruptions as possible. And so, we like, our goal is to mitigate the spread so that we keep kids in school, in the classroom with minimal disruptions to that learning. What we learned from last year, both in our district as well as around the state and the nation, is that remote learning, kids that were participating in remote learning had higher levels of learning loss than students that were in, in class face-to-face, even wearing masks. That was clear to us. And so, we feel like whatever we can do to make sure kids can come to school is beneficial. And so, we got, we wanted to rethink of whatever adjustments we want to make, it's how can we do that to even keep kids in school? And keep schools going. And so, I'll explain now. Last year, you heard it from the public comment today, and we've heard it in all the public comments. It worked. Folks said, man, we had, we were able to pull off in-school instruction for the year with, I mean, it was a lot of work, and I'll say that in a minute. But our multi-layered approach last year included masks, we had plexiglass, we had distancing, when feasible, it was always difficult to have six feet, even three feet at a lot of distances. Ventilation, the screening before you even came to school, I know we got a lot of grumpy, people, it didn't, it wasn't easy, right? When you had the email and you had to complete the screener, if you had symptoms, you got ran, you had to call the nurse. We're not doing the electronic thing, but our sense was that the community in general learned how important it was to see if you have symptoms and if you do, to call someone. So we feel like we developed that habit, but we didn't have to do the email this year. But that was important to us last year and also cohorting. So, we had lots of layers. It's hard to say which one layer enabled us to have such a successful year, but we did it. I think feedback we had, and it worked. Last year, we only documented two cases in which somebody spread COVID at school. So we had lots of cases of kids coming to school with COVID, that they were getting it outside and coming. We were doing a contact tracing, they get isolated, close contact quarantine, and it didn't spread except for one. That's amazing. And when we share that with Metro Health and with other school districts, that is amazing. And so, we know how we do it, we know how to do it. But the thing we wanted to reflect on was, it was super hard. And I think the public generally knows what they know, but I want to share a little bit about, when we started to say, okay, so going in, and so what I'm gonna share with you all is what the conditions and stressors we learned from our experience last year. A reasoned, fact-based analysis of what the stressors are to the system. The first thing is, when students have to be, when they're out of the classroom, whether that's they're tested positive, whether that's they're showing symptoms, or whether that they're close contact, they don't learn as deeply. I mean, it's a given, right? As much as you do, as much as the homework help you have, it's just harder on the kids. The parents that have experienced it, they know it's harder on the parents. The teachers who experienced it, it's hard on the teachers. I got a class of 21 kids. If I have 10 that are out, I've got to deal with the 11 in front of me and the 10 that are at home. It's just, it's not an ideal situation and that is a stressor. So when numbers are high, that's one of the stressors we experienced. I'm not saying you experience that all year, but you experience it when numbers are high, when COVID numbers are high. The second thing is that when, when COVID numbers are high and we have teachers that are out and we can't get subs, we have to cancel certain programming. So we had instances last year when numbers were high that the GT classes couldn't make, because we had to pull the GT teachers to come over here and cover regular class. Likewise, with intervention classes, with some specials. We couldn't do health and art all the time because we had to cover other places. When numbers were high, that is a stressor on the system. Last year, we did have to close two classrooms in which all of us, in which a certain number of students had active cases and therefore, certain other number of students were in close contact. Likewise, with the adults who worked with them, they couldn't come to school. And for certain special populations, with specially students with disabilities, if you're in that boat, that's hard for the kid and for the parent, but that happens when numbers are high. And so, that's a stressor if we ever had to cross that. Luckily, we only had to experience it twice. But I don't want to downplay how hard it was for those two instances. It was really difficult for 10 days for those folks. Likewise, you did a lack of subs in two ways. One is when you have so many teachers that are out because you need subs. But the second thing is, we got a fair amount of subs that don't want to work in an environment where there's a lot of numbers. And a lot of our subs at that time were elderly and we didn't have a vaccine. We're getting messages now from subs where we've sent out a thing saying he's ready to come back. And they say, well, the numbers are high now. If there's not masks, I'm not sure I'm coming back. I'm just saying what they're telling us. But last year, when we, it was difficult to field subs to cover all the adults. Now, that's the hard thing. People were saying, what's the number you close schools? Well, it doesn't matter the number so much as if we don't have adults to supervise the kids, it's hard to have school. And so, that was a stressor on the system. Now, the next one is, I'm gonna try to explain it from different perspectives. And so, the first perspective is from the school nurse. When we do contact tracing, the nurse takes the lead and they work with the teachers and the staff. When the parents call and say, hey, my kid tested positive, thanks for letting me know. You find out what class they're in at the elementary level, because kids are essentially self-sustained. It takes a lot of work, but it's not as hard as in the secondary. So think about the way, picture the way it works. The teacher has to find out, okay, so who's the kid? Then you have to go and do your investigation, maintaining confidentiality, mind you. You can't just go in there and say Bobby caught it. Everybody who was sitting by Bobby. You have to do it in a discreet fashion. You have to say, great, so tell me who was sitting here, how long were they there? How long were you there? Were they wearing their masks? And so, all of the legwork to do contact tracing, for one case, is a lot of time and effort on the nurse, who arguably should be available to talk to, to deal with kids that are sick, to deal with parents who have questions, and they're doing the contact tracing with help as, as we can. At the secondary level, where kids have, this year, eight different classes, is that secondary, yeah? Eight different classes, it's just, it's that much more difficult. And so, we know we have to do it, we're committing to do it. When we have high numbers, that's a stressor on the system. And it's not just on the nurse, although that is really important to make sure that we don't push our nurses to leave because they're awesome and we need them to be able to do their job. But we have high numbers, it's hard on them. But it's also hard on the families. Because when the nurses are involved doing all this contact tracing, if we have high numbers, parents don't get timely communication that they need and they're not accessible. So it hits parents and the nurses at the same time, but it also hits the kids because nurses aren't available to do that. And so, that's the, a big stressor on the system. And a system can't work if your folks are working, you know, 60 hours a week, even through the weekends, 14-hour days. It's just when we have high numbers, that's the distresser on the system. So, before we get to that, that's the point I'm gonna say. So, we reviewed, we had a sense, okay, so that's what it means like when we felt like, we looked around and said, I don't think we're gonna make it. When folks were like, I think I need to, I mean, I raised my hand, I was like, I, there were several times I was like, I'm not sure I'm in the right job because this is hard. And you can bet that our nurses felt that, you can bet that our teachers felt that, and who knows, maybe even parents felt that, but we don't pay them to come to work. We do. And so, the question was, great, so we know what it felt like when we were at our most stressed. Let's look back at the data to see what the numbers were, right? So if our experience was, this is what it was when we felt stressed, let's look back and see what that looked like. And what we found was that during those times, and I'll have a little slide to share it, it was like between 1% and 1.25. 1% when we were stuck in air. Now, it was hard, it was really hard. 1.25, we were stuck in air. It was like we were, it was hard. And so, we feel like that, and that's, let me show you what I mean by that. So, this is last year, our highest counts as a district, this is only student numbers, it doesn't mix in employees. So last year, January the 4th, right when we came back from the holiday, as a district, we averaged 1.24. That means of all the kids enrolled in on-campus instruction, the percentage that were COVID positive. At the high school, the highest was a few days after that, 1.79. The junior school was that day, 1.39. Cambridge, Woodbridge and Howard, you see accordingly. Now, you'll notice there's a span. If you think about it, we also, but it wasn't an all-time high, but it started speaking. You see a little bit of a peak after Halloween. Makes sense, right? I repeat, we went out to parties and stuff. You see a peak after Thanksgiving break. So we're off for a week. We come back and they're not that high, but you can see Woodbridge and Howard, you start to see some of that residual Thanksgiving tale. So it's gonna have a long tail given, that's a 14-day incubation period. So it's gonna have a long tail given that's a 14-day incubation period. There's a long tail after, uh, holidays essentially, right? So Halloween, Thanksgiving, winter break, and then you you see it. Yeah.
So you're saying that during these times, when we had those type of case rates, that's when you all experienced the heaviest part of all staff reassigned to those, sending classes home, so you could get to the class set of quality.
Yeah.
And aligning these moments.
That's right, that's right. I, I don't know what to call it. I, I almost feel like I want to say it didn't stretch our capacity, I would say it exceeded our capacity. Like I feel like 1% stretched our capacity. You can't live at those levels for long. Luckily, they, luckily, they, uh, yeah, that's what I mean. So I went back and checked it. Now, so that was last year. So a very fact-based, experience-based incident of a, of a district that most folks would say we handled it, we did it well. This is what we learned from last year. As we start to compare the different contexts, last year, we had at least six mitigation measures, depending on what you want to put up there. Uh, this year, we didn't have masks because we opened up, that was an optional mask, but you can't count on it necessarily. And we, since we thought Plexiglas was a low strategy, we picked it out, but we picked up vaccines. That's something we didn't have last year really. And so we started with four layers. Last year, remember, we started, we phased in last year. And so on our fifth day of class, in-person classes, we had three active cases. This year, on our fifth day of class, which was yesterday, we had 30 cases. Uh, last year, on the fifth day, close contact exposure, students and staff combined, we had zero. This year, on our fifth day, which was yesterday, we had 108. Now, those people are in close contact, there's a variety of folks, right? See, CDC says if you're fully vaccinated, they don't recommend that you have to quarantine. So there's maybe 48 of those who are fully vaccinated. So I don't, I won't parse out the numbers to you all. But the point is that as we do the work, when you define close contact as the 15 minutes within six feet, uh, density and intensity, or duration and intensity, uh, that's what that means.
So that number, that number waits before you strip out?
Right, the number waits before you strip out. I think maybe there's 40, uh, the number of kids that are not with us is like 40 something.
There are 40 who are currently in their homes, not in our campuses, not in our classrooms, um, on close contact quarantine. So 70 students at this time on day five are not in our classrooms learning.
All right, now, I'm gonna, I should explain this, I guess, uh, because there's a lot of numbers, so I'm gonna walk you through it. Um, I just gave you all of those numbers sexually, so I highlighted that because that's the district-wide. When you average it, that's the highest, these were all the other campuses. And so if we look at this week, we'll go to, we see Woodbridge is already pushing capacity. And, and I can tell you, I, I knew that before I even looked at the numbers. In talking to Ms. Feldman, in talking to the nurse, we have an auxiliary nurse that we hired this year to float. She's been there a lot. We had to get another sub nurse to come in here and help us a lot. So my experience, based on what I learned last year and experience this week, I could have told you this without looking at the numbers, but the numbers bear it out. And so we're already pushing capacity now. Uh, we're not necessarily district-wide at that 1%, we didn't really start to feel it, but we certainly are trending up as a district and of course, the different campuses are all all over the place. And so when we stop to look, it's to say, if we want to apply what we learned last year and think about what we can do proactively to prevent our system exceeding capacity so that we keep kids in classrooms learning, uh, these are just some things to consider. We kind of have it in general, uh, I don't know if the word metric is the right way, but just some indicators to tell us where we're headed. Yes, thanks.
Um, though we are seeing those numbers go up, we also are contact tracing and are aware that virtually, basically, none of those are campus spread. They are just, um, as kids are being identified day by day, coming into the campus with these cases versus spreading within the campus, just to clarify.
We identified one spread, uh, yesterday? Yeah, so it's the first one, we could, we could identify that a student caught it at school. Now remember, all of last year, we only found that twice. This year, we've been in school for five days, we found it already once. And, you know, I'm just pointing at the fact. Now, so I'm gonna pause for a second. And remember earlier, I said that the state is not funding a remote platform for learning? I know a lot of people have been asking for that. And every individual conversation I have is that, uh, you know, the state's not funding that. And some folks say, well, how is I as, Austin, I as they doing that? It's like, well, they're using their federal funds to do it. I don't know how they're gonna do it because we exhausted all of our federal funds to, uh, invest in catching kids up that struggled learning last year as well as, uh, refilling all of the mitigation things that we did. There's not money to do remote learning like that. But the state did say, for students who have to stay home under quarantine, whether that's isolation for being an active case or just close contact, you guys can count them as present and therefore we will fund that if you roll out something called remote conferencing, which for an elementary child means you have to have two hours of synchronous time with a teacher who's not your teacher of record. Like they specify this at, they're trying to protect the classroom integrity and not overburden teachers. So they say if you have a separate teacher that can do remote learning, uh, that's two hours for elementary, that can be counted as present and get funding for that. And for high school, it's four hours. So the next slide outlines what that is. It's only available for up to 20 days over the entirety of a year. I will say that TDA came out with guidance yesterday saying that that 20 days can be extended if you apply for a medical waiver. Uh, but as we started, uh, it was 20 days. So that, that, if you think about it, if I'm a student and I, I have COVID and I have to stay home, this is an option for me. Now, districts are not required to do this. And in lots of districts we've talked to in the area, they're like, that's, I don't, they can't even conceive of how good after nine, we don't offer this. We're committed to offering this and we need a little time to stand it up. And so that's what it says at the bottom, uh, beginning after Labor Day, is we want to have this rolling. And so they'll be eligible for this if they have tested positive for a communicable condition such as COVID. There's actually additions, uh, the Department of Health has a list of, uh, of communicable diseases that you can qualify for this. Uh, that, or if you've been identified as close contact, or if you have a temporary condition documented by a physician that notes that you have to remain confined in the home or in the hospital. So it's a pretty high bar to qualify for this. If you're out just because you have a cold, you don't qualify for this. Yeah. This is never been known about, I'll take a pause for a second. So this is called remote conferencing and it's for a limited, about the 20 days. We have always had, uh, in Texas, something called home-bound instruction. And that's when, uh, a doctor says that you have some kind of a disease that you cannot leave the house and you have to go through paperwork and the doctor has to certify it. And then we send a teacher to your house for four hours a day for instruction. That works underneath the special education umbrella because it's, it's considered a disability. Thanks for clarifying that, Mr. Hornberger. Now, I want to clarify the, the bullet, almost the last second bullet from the bottom. This is not like last year's heights at home, that is not what we mean. This is a substitute teacher that we've hired, one of our best, obviously, but it's a substitute teacher. And it's a substitute teacher that logs in and the child logs in and they're like, all right, let's look at what your classroom teacher has assigned you in your Google classroom and if you got any questions, all right, let's just work on it. No, I'm not gonna teach you, just do your work. No, you can't go to the bathroom, just do your work. And so you've instituted a sub sitting with a teacher versus remotely. This is not like heights at home last year. This is, this is one of the things the state is offering, but only up to 20 days for those specific instances. Uh, and so it's gonna take us to about, uh, Labor Day, to after Labor Day to stand this up. We're already identifying subs and training them. Yep, sorry. All right, now, uh, I'm done with my product, I hand it over to Dr. Sher.
So Frank, if you go to the next slide, I am going to come to you all as a team of trustees to ask for some additional resources that I had not expected to need to come to you with, um, before the arrival of this Delta variant and the challenges that we're facing as a result. And so, um, it is, I'm giving you just a heads up of some things that I'm gonna be talking and, and need some support on pretty quickly here. It is quite possible that we will need, um, additional nursing staff. We did approve through the staffing process this spring, one additional physician for me. And I'm anticipating by the numbers that we're seeing right now that my nursing team is going to need some support moving forward. Um, in order to run remote conferencing in a way that is responsive to primary learners, elementary learners, upper elementary learners, middle school learners and high school learners, we're gonna need some additional permanent substitutes hired to provide that kind of support. And, and again, that was a newer allowance to us and so we're, we're still trying to stand that up. Our goal is to have that in place by the week of Labor Day, but in the meantime, I'm gonna need to come to you for some additional support that way. Um, I would like to talk through additional ways to support our staff as they walk through this year. We're seeing, um, breakthrough transmission in our vaccinated staff members who are all in quarantine at this point. And I would like to provide them with additional COVID leave. I would also like to provide them flexibility when they are able to, when they are not sick, to be able to teach into the classroom with a substitute present because we know that instruction from our classroom teachers is so much more meaningful, um, than instruction from a substitute. So now I'm just giving a heads up that, that all of that is coming. Um, again, I had not anticipated being in this place, you know, Lisa, go ahead.
Yeah, so we, I feel very creatively, came up with an option last year because we had so many substitutes in classrooms who were implementing substitute plans. And that, that's different when you don't have a certified teacher in the classroom. And so what we allowed our teachers to do was to stay at home and to remote into the classroom and, and they would be teaching on the screen and the substitute would be facilitating the lessons in the classroom. And so they also wouldn't have to dip into their sick leave. With their quarant, yeah, also teachers who are quarantined, so. Um, so just know that that's all coming and I'll keep you updated as far as the timings of that. So y'all, our priority is keeping our kids in school, keeping our kids learning. Uh, we know that what we did last year to open our schools and to keep our schools open for in-person learning lasted the duration of the year. Our team worked extensively during a time of heightened, um, uncertainty to chart a course, one that was thoughtful, one that was responsive to the local data. Uh, they worked around the clock. I had two staff members here today, Chumee and Frank, and, um, they need acknowledged for the work that they have committed themselves to last year throughout the course of the summer and, and as we wave through plans for this year too. Um, I am appreciative of some of the acknowledgement that we've heard about that. It truly, um, is so affirming to hear words of affirmation for the, for the successful course that we charted last year. We know what we did to keep our schools open last year. We need our home heights to see students in our classrooms learning, not at home recovering from COVID, not at home trying to learn in remote conferencing, um, when they're in quarantine. It's more important than ever that we prioritize academics and student growth and achievement. You all saw the numbers on this presentation. After week one, we have 30 students out, away from our classrooms, recovering from COVID. We have 40 students out on quarantine because of close contact expenditure, um, all in one week. So I am, uh, recommending that we move forward with a temporary mask requirement to respond to the increased cases and to keep our students in our school. Beyond the three weeks, I recommend that we make responsive campus-by-campus decisions related to that 1% threshold that we noted in the data that we saw when we think about our capacity for providing programming and instruction and keeping our schools open. Y'all, I know that this is not the year that any one of us had envisioned. I know that last spring, we were very excited as we were moving to the school year, even this summer, when we had masks as an option for our students. We were really excited. Um, the arrival of this Delta variant upended, you know, the plans that we had in place. And, um, we are just in a place that we need to make different decisions, best decisions based on the data that we can anchor into from the success that we experienced last year. So I do think that this recommendation will help us move forward in keeping the most students in our classrooms, learning on all of our campus. Um, and I would love to open it for discussion for you all with your thoughts based on what you saw.
So one of the things I wanted to clarify, um, so those three weeks are if you mask them or if you mask properly, that then means they will not have to quarantine depending on the situation. And, and so we'll keep kids back at school without, that, because if we had our mask on, um, and we won't be spending so much time away at home.
That's correct. Students who wear their masks are not subject to the close quarantine.
So, so how, I'd like to, I mean, I don't want to get into the world anymore, but. Where is the temporary? Do you intend to have like a, everyone look at this in the, at the case rate of the current referencing? Because we kind of know that's our breaking point is when the case rate gets over thirty.
That's correct. I'd like us to use that 1% case count, uh, percentage to make decisions moving forward. You saw, we have different needs on different campuses. And so once we get through that three weeks, that takes us after Labor Day. And we've heard from doctors that is, um, a possibility that the increase in numbers that we've seen over the past weeks could change and put us in a different position. And so I'd like the flexibility to be able to respond to the local data. So the three weeks would take us to the conclusion of the week following Labor Day. Last year, uh, we saw our first uptick in positive cases after families went away for Labor Day weekend and then came back onto our campuses.
And so this is effective, to begin like this, you're saying, we're, we're based on a lot of this experience now, not off, you know, bandit codes or whatever. And so our last year, we started with such lower number of students, starting with higher numbers. And so that's why you have a temporary role in place.
That's correct.
I just, I, I want to say, and we've heard it again and again, we heard it from the members of the audience, the citizens who spoke. We couldn't address it then, we heard it from Frank, we've heard it from you. Last year worked. And while that seems kind of trite and cliche, just to say that, I think it's really important to recognize that last year worked, we faced this pandemic and we put together a multi-layered approach that kept our campuses open all year long. While the rest of the country was debating into April, March, April, May, opening their campuses, we were there. And was it a perfect year? Of course not, but it worked. And so we've heard a lot from doctors, from parents, from concerned citizens. We've digested a lot of studies, conflicting information. I think the one thing that we can always return to is we have some practical experience with an approach that works. And for me at least, that seems to caution me not to stray from what we know works without there being a compelling reason. And I see it at the beginning of the year, a week ago, it feels like months. Um, there wasn't a compelling reason. We knew what the law was, or at least we thought we knew what the law was. We had a governor's order saying you can't have masks. And we have always pledged and we will continue to pledge that we are going to follow the law. That's what we have to do, that is the responsible thing to do as trustees. In the ensuing week or so, the state of the law has been thrown into utter chaos. We are seeing our kids bounce between a fight in which, and I was just jotting it down, who has authority over us, over our school district? Is it the governor? Is it the county? Is it the city? And if it's the city, which of the three cities in which we have campuses is in control? And what we're seeing, we've got court decisions all over the place, there is no clear. There is no clear guidance. And in that, I think we have to lean into two things. The Texas Education Code, which says, school boards, trustees have control over local districts. And until we're told otherwise, which we may be told that pretty soon, we may not be. I think we have to lean into, we know that provision is out there, and the Texas Constitution also does. I, you know, so that's legally kind of where we sit. I think for this, I'm fine with the temporary mask requirement. I think we know it worked last year. I like the commitment to, let's look at numbers. If trends change, I mean, it'd be the greatest thing for all of us if all these case numbers started to go down. And we could, with good conscience, happily say, you know what? Take the masks off or make them optional. But I think right now, we need to stick with what we know works. Clay?
John, can you ask Dan to kind of articulate what happens in three weeks? So everybody can understand, like, in three weeks, we're not gonna be here again.
No, we're not. No, we're not.
Have fingers and then, so maybe, and I'm sure we sent out.
Yeah, we'll send.
Multiple issues, so it will be lack of light, but.
We will use that 1% positive case threshold to make decisions campus by campus. But I'm also recommending that y'all give me discretion to make responsive decisions based on possible campus spread, isolated situations that we see rise up, or based on an escalated trend that we're seeing beyond that 1%, if that makes sense.
And that's what I was going to speak to too, Clay, was, you know, something that has been important to me and that I think is important to our community is seeing an objective point at which the switch goes on and off. And I appreciate that Dr. Bishara is open to that because that takes more work and attention in some ways than just doing what some of the bigger school districts are doing. And, you know, putting masks on mandatory for as long as the board decides otherwise. And we're not doing it that way in this small district. It's something that we can appreciate about our little community is it's just a few campuses we have to watch. But we are going to be responsive to every single campus and that campus's needs and their numbers. And it is not open-ended. And so again, in school that has masks on based on a 1% is gonna have those masks come off when the 1% drops back down on a certain, you know, what we're talking about, you know, bi-weekly maybe basis. It is not gonna be, the temporary is not open-ended. And I think that's important to our community, it's important to the folks sitting up here, and I know it's important to Dr. Bishara too. So thank you for being willing to do that, because I do feel that what we're discussing up here is putting a lot back on our administration that has worked incredibly hard for the past year and a half. And I appreciate you all really being willing to listen and be adaptive based on what this community is wanting while keeping our doors open. And if I can just say one more thing. Our job, I'll speak for myself, my job as a trustee is to educate these kids and have them in the school building. And right now, sitting here today after five days, I feel that I'm failing a good chunk of those kids because they are home and they cannot be in the school building. And if masks, and I've read a lot of mask studies over the past week, and I believe that having source-controlled masking is different than optional masking. Source-controlled masking means masking the asymptomatic person who does not know that she is contagious, and it is more effective than optional masking, which is the child who wants to be protected wearing the mask. And I don't feel like, I feel like there is a misconception in our community about the difference. And so here's where I'm going with this, and I won't go on. This is what I'm trying to say, is that we need to do the source-controlled masking at this point for three weeks to get our kids back in the school building and get the education that we have promised to give them. And so I do support the approach that we're trying to take up here.
I appreciate saying that last year worked, particularly because I had to sit in Ryan's chair. It was a long year. But I also acknowledge it was not perfect, because like, I think it was risky. That's what we always have to do. And so what my writing standard here is, we need a better balance, and this phrase was used, has been used several times in festivals, we need a better balance of balancing the impact of the risk control measures against the risk itself. So if you have those two things, thanks for your work. And so I get, because there are, there are detriments to protecting the health of kids in terms of emotional, educational impact, and then there's also a detriment in the other direction. So I'm tracking all this. So what I'm trying to think is, okay, we need it in three weeks, because if the numbers were just starting out, if we're starting out with some numbers, you're like, whoa, whoa, based on last year, guys, I need to talk to my trustees in three weeks. So I got that, and I got the three weeks, okay? And I got the crying people, 1% is kind of this, this operational key. And like, we've all talked, I think everybody in the audience has talked about this. Like, the only thing we need to do anyway is like, all the numbers matter, but nobody knows how the numbers matter. So at least we have some experiential evidence about the number matters to us. Alright, so we've got three weeks, and you had to reassess it three weeks. How often do you intend to reassess?
Yeah, we intend to reassess every two weeks. And so that 1% threshold has to hold for two weeks. It's not an immediate decision to unmask, if that makes sense.
Okay, so yeah, so like, in three weeks, how are we doing? Oh, good. Then in two weeks, and that's just the question here. Two weeks of no mask or mask optional?
Okay, so once we hit the 1%, less than the 1% threshold for two weeks, then it is choice masking. Yes. It is only for indoor. We learned so much last year about the way that this virus does not spread when our students are outside, and the fact that our students need to take mask breaks when they're outside. They don't need to be running around the track with their mask on. They need to be able to be on the playground without their mask on. And certainly, there are students that don't take masks outside, and that's fine too, but it's a great time for mask breaks. Yes, and you heard that from one of our speakers today, just, you know, a representative of our Teacher Association just saying, they want to prioritize time outside, and they want us to be thoughtful in helping them think through what that might look like.
We have talked about this, Dr. Bishara, but with, I know at the junior school level, they're able to get outside for lunch if they want to, which I think is fantastic. Are we, can we continue to work on an option to get the elementary kids? I know that there's some folks who have tried really hard to mask all week. They're still in quarantine right now because of the lunch hour, which is a problem. And is there a way that we can get more kids outside, get more options outside for the elementary?
So we will definitely look into that as a possibility. I will tell you, it's logistically very difficult as far as the monitoring piece of it at the elementary. What will be different about a mask requirement is that when the kids are finished with their lunch at the elementary, they then are encouraged to put their mask back on their face, which limits many of the 15-minute exposure. And so the warranties that you have seen this week as a result of our cafeterias are because kids are taking off their mask if they're wearing their mask, and they are identified as a close contact exposure. We did not see that last year when our monitors reminded kids to put their masks back on after Labor Day. Yes, Clay?
So I'll say this, and I just wanted everybody to know that the one thing that I thought was very dangerous associated, and what mattered to me was, it's apparent from the data we have from last year that when we got to 1.25 or 2.6%, we were almost to, we got to put a sign out, sorry, folks, park closed, and no one's coming. Now, I'm not saying it's 1.6 or whatever, but we feel pretty confident that if we get to the 2% level, you know.
So at the 1%, yeah, at the 1.24% that we saw on January 4th last year, programming was effective at that point. We were not able to provide intervention services, we were not able to provide specials at the elementary level, because teachers were all hands-on deck trying to cover. We were combining classes, and yeah, you're correct.
I think following up on your point, Clay, is this idea of we have to shift special interventionist. We are in a catch-up year, and we have a plan, because I know what our buzz is talking about. We need more intervention, need more intervention for these kids, and we need to have enough. And if we get to a point where we're having to pull our intervention style, interventionist style to just be substitutes in the classroom, it would work for both kids on both sides.
Have you thought about our visitors that come more frequently? If they just, they can come out, their mask done, vaccinated, or, you know, obviously, but at this point, would we be able to let them, prevent them from.
You know, Carrie, I would love to say yes. To me, it makes a lot of sense that if we're under a mask requirement and visitors from outside are coming in and they're cooperative with our mask requirement, that they would be able to be in our schools. And so we will definitely spend some time thinking through what that looks like.
One last sort of clarification in your three-week mask recommendation. It won't be like last year, when they go outside, they don't have to have masks on, correct?
They will not have to have a mask on when they go outside.
Yeah, but they're doing activities.
That's correct. When you say doing activities, we have procedures that were in place according to U I L regulations as far as what our practices look like. I think that's what you're referring to, so all of those same procedures will be in place. You did?
We had, I don't know if it was a joke last year, but understanding that because things are changing every six, seven, eight, nine, 100, 110, whatever. So this sounds thoughtful and responsive, right? Like, I don't think there's any way to get something properly awesome because this is new to the whole world. So I guess what I'm looking for is an understanding that as circumstances change, as all of us, we'll reassess, come back with different recommendations. I mean, if vaccinations are available for, you know, age four through, you know, 90, and kids have that, we're licensed, then that can change how we handle supplies. That makes sense?
I was gonna add one more thing. I just want to recognize that if anyone who is now still sitting here in the audience at this point, I realize that they're only there because you don't wait that many hours to listen to all of this unless you really, really care about the answer. And I wanted to recognize that. That means that pretty much every person in the audience right now is disappointed in some way by this. And I'm not saying that as a joke, I don't take it lightly. Everybody in the audience is upset in some form because nobody got 100% of what they were wanting today. And I, sitting up here, I feel responsibility for that. I think it's, I think it's understandable. It is hard. I saw someone roll their eyes. It is hard. It's hard. But it is also true that with the solution, it's a solution that does the best job of getting kids in schools again, and it also does reach compromise of sorts. So that's what I wanted to say.
Well, I have a question, like, this is, I don't mean to quote all the words, because like, I don't want to compromise all the time, but like, we have to balance things. Like, if we protect kids completely, their health, it won't harm any of us. But then if we free them up completely, they don't harm any of their health. So we've got to, sorry. So like, is this, Ryan, are we gonna have a motion? Or Dan, I know you did this, but also noted, you know, institutional integrity is important in this school district, so.
If everyone's done the discussion, we have a question, someone else.
Eric?
Do you have any motion, or you asked about?
Yes, Mr. Anderson, I have a motion. I move that we reinstate temporary three-week mask requirement indoors on all district campuses and buses for staff, students, and visitors, consistent with last year's masking protocols. Thereafter, masking requirements would be contingent on a 1% active COVID-19 case rate threshold assessed on a campus-by-campus basis. And the superintendent would have discretion to proactively address campus spread or escalating conditions during that time.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Second by Clay. All in favor? High opposed? Motion passes. That concludes the, I guess what I'd like to say to the folks who are here, that this is the policy that we have adopted. I would ask for community support in this. I think it is time now for us to rally together. We've had our say, we've thought our way through it, and I think it's just time for everyone to come together. Our students in particular have had enough stress. They're only one week into this school year. They deserve a more peaceful school year. And so I think anything that we, as the adults in the community, can do to make their years less stressful, I think we all owe that to our children. Thank you very much. Leave it in the room.
I have a question, though. So the majority should rule, and the minority should just sit down and lay over? That doesn't make, that's not fair. Sorry. Hey, Frank, so.
I appreciate you guys staying here. I would also appreciate you guys vacating the area. Have you noticed we've got a police officer that's working overtime? And we've gotta start shutting stuff down, so as a safety measure, please.
Thank you for having me.
Go ahead, head on out. Thank you, guys. Please exit, and make sure you exit the building ASAP. We've gotta clean up here and get out.
I have a question. So after the three weeks is over, and it's under 1%, then they go optional, right?
What we're gonna do is send out an email. We'll send out written communication for all of this, so you guys can have it all in writing.
Okay, because I'm just confused on the times, that's it.
Okay, yeah, and I gotta deal with reporters now, so.
Hey, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Were masks required last year?
Yeah, they were by the governor's order. So in Texas, the governor required masks in all schools. That's part of it, yeah. What makes it so hard is that this year, he said you can't do it, and so it's just been back.
I just wanted to make sure I have that.
Clay.
Yeah, last year, they're all, this school year, every school in the state of Texas had to have. Yeah, hey, yeah, you got it. Welcome to Texas.
She's like, welcome to Texas. Sorry, love, I'm recording these crazy people. And she's like, the majority should rule. So just because you have a majority, you should rule? So no one else should be considered? Because you're smaller, because you rule more than we do? How's that? That's fucking ridiculous, fuck. Hi, bye. I'm gonna keep a coin just in case. Okay, okay. You too. So that's a question. If, so after three weeks, if the percentage is under 1%, then they go to optional mask, right? And then she said something about two weeks window, right? So after two weeks, so, and after two weeks, if the percentage goes back up, then we go back to mask for three weeks?
I got the sense that it's a two-week interval of assessing.